Sorry? Some shit?
You okay?
Oh, I did not hear. I did not hear. No, we did not. Yeah. Oh, wait, was that just the car? Yeah. So, I can't read that too. How bad was it? You get some sense?
Which one you run?
Yeah.
The one down there?
I'm telling you that I have to talk to the chief after this. Oh, yeah? Are you still the old one?
This is in every tree for one of us.
I thought that was the old one. She don't have the money here. Sure. But she... Really? And it's still warm? When is she gonna play? You know? She wore this face off.
Yes.
There you go. There you go.
You got the number and everything? Okay.
Morning. I know, all sleeve shirt. But when I left the house, did you give me this? We should do the private as well. I'd say we should do even seven thirty. Because if they're gonna be like... It is open, but... No, really, white shirts. There you go.
You got it?
What?
He commanded. He said, "Ready?" I said, "Yes."
All right, we'll start the meeting where a few minutes later these guys got cold just as they were on their way up here. They had called in, taken care of first. That's why we're starting late. It is a work session to discuss Mr. State and policies and guidelines for the Deerfield Fire Department. I'm gonna suspend the pledge of allegiance until our regular meeting at six o'clock. So, I hereby open the meeting.
Let's get it going!
Thanks for all your work on this.
All right, turn this phone down. Yeah. Soon as I find it, so, give me a second.
All right, who's going first?
Anybody.
Want to just go step by step and find out what we have questions going for? Whatever the first thing is?
All right. Motivate. First page, I'm not sure. You got any question? Second page, table content.
So, on the chain of command, we took out the trustee in charge of the fire department. We don't really have one of those right now, so we can always adjust that if that changes in the future.
Okay.
I didn't see any changes with... And you can tell me, maybe I missed something. In policy one about safety, or policy two about code of conduct, those all looked unchanged.
I was just showing you as we get through the...
Okay. To fill out repair request form. Okay? And then the turnout here, I don't know what your...
Ideal, I mean, immediate engagement.
Okay. Okay, so...
That's just terminology stuff.
So, you... The policy didn't change?
No, no, I just added a couple words here.
Okay. Nope, I was fine with all of that.
And then I, like at the bottom right here, like...
Okay. I like the addition of the smoking, baking, and township equipment. Seems like it should be, oh, without saying, but if it doesn't, if it's said, it's not done, so, yes.
Are you on page five? I'm on page eight. I'm on page five. Page five, I have a page in there. Here's the second bullet point. You know, the fight of chief of law.
I'm actually missing page five.
Yeah, so am I.
I'm missing page five.
I don't either. Can I have this?
We can make a quick copy. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I didn't see the...
Did you get page five? I figured you got one.
Thank you.
Right. Do you have another terminology? Yeah, it was just more like a patient.
To notify of any exposure while you're... Yeah.
Gotcha. Like if we go, for example, usually the... Wise. Okay?
No. Questions about this funding?
All right, page six, did you change anything?
No.
Okay. Seven's the same?
We had an addition about smoking, baking, and township equipment. Sounds like a great addition.
All right.
Page three, can I just stretch out this?
What page?
So... When you're signing, with the vote, they're much too personal for using license ID. Can you tell me a little bit about that? About why we did that?
Well, realistically, there's no, I mean, I don't have to come to this call, so, I mean, there's no difference whether I'm in the station today or myself at a house fire, I go to it in front of them.
Right.
And obviously, we're running mutually calls, we're willing to go close, so obviously, hopefully, the department X is part of life for assistance to the department Y. I don't think I was meant to be strictly how this is. Sort of like...
Okay.
Okay?
And then three point two, we had some changes.
What's the...
So, the original said off-duty personnel may respond to the station or the scene if they would be passing the scene on the waiting station. If off-duty personnel are responding, light vehicle must have been inspected by the state highway patrol, and they must have a green state that will file a voluntary fire lighter sticker fixed to the right corner of their vehicle windshield. So, the change here was that we're not responding directly to the fire station anymore, we're going to scene as it entails. And I thought this deserved a little bit of discussion and a little bit of...
Well, here's my thoughts. I thought about that, and we've been doing it for years and years and years here. Let's say you were, you live on Lafitte, and you're a paramedic, and there's a heart attack or a stroke two streets over on Treasure. Doesn't make any sense to go all the way to the station first. It just, time is, I mean, especially on a heart attack and things of that nature. Now, I know this one part was put in targeted John Gertz. John and Scott Simmons had a big argument at the scene because he didn't go. Now, John's a firefighter, and John really can't do much medically wise. He could be there specifically, maybe to help lift, or whatever, but that specific one was targeted at John Gertz. Right, but I'm just saying, as far as, I agree, it's ninety-nine percent of our calls, let's say, are EMS. Whoever's at that station is bringing the squad.
Obviously, it's a gray area. There's calls where it's been close to the township, but I've gone direct because I heard the ambulance go.
It is, it is a common...
And obviously, if the ambulance wasn't coming, yeah, it would come to the station.
Well, we had just not too long ago, did we have two vehicles stranded somewhere? The truck and... So, now there's no... You know what I mean? So, those were left at scene so you could transport. So, it's kind of a... Do you guys communicate with radio wise? It's like... Should tell you...
Yeah, I mean, let's say there's a house fire to my house, the station, the engine came out.
Correct. It's a common sense thing, what you think?
I've done a lot of research on this. I've talked to some other fire chiefs in the area, and I think we could probably benefit from some better verbiage with this policy.
How about...
Well, let me finish if I may.
All right.
When it comes to fire calls, if we have people responding to fire calls without going to station first, they're not gonna have any of their safety equipment, so they're not gonna be much use without proper gear, proper tires at a fair statement.
But again, I... Okay, on EMS calls, I would say it's not as important, but on fire calls, I'd have to agree with her. That if you don't have your gear with you, then you do need to go to the station? Right, but that's what I'm saying, so I think, again, it comes back to common sense.
And in the past, we've had issues where we had people responding with their vehicle. We didn't have the necessary trucks that we needed on scene. We have extra vehicles taking us safe instead of the fire vehicles that we need, which is why I think this policy is really important and deserves a little bit more attention and maybe some better verbiage.
Well, again...
Well, I'm reading the twenty-twenty ones. Or twelve-one-twenty-one.
Okay.
And I'm reading the one we put in.
Okay.
Basically, the first line, is that what we're talking about? The first line?
Unless they are passing the scene.
Right. Okay, it says here, "May respond to the station or to the scene if they were passing the scene to have a way to the station." This one says, the current one, "Off-duty personnel may respond to the station or to the scene depending on the proximity to the call of the location."
So, that covers it?
Basically, are they saying the same?
It is.
It's a little gray eye thought.
But I think it is kind of a gray. I mean, if you're communicating, and you know that the engine's already left, and you already know that the tanker's left, and you're running late to that call, I don't know. I think, I think to get people on the scene quicker, I don't know, as long as you can hear. Again, it comes down to common sense. You're listening to the radio, and somebody says they have the tanker, somebody's got the pumper. If you have your equipment with you, your turnout gear, then go to the call. I just think it's, I think it's covered enough there. They may respond, it says right there.
I can see where this could lead to confusion if you've got people responding directly to scene instead of going to the station when we still need equipment, when we still... I think, you know, not going to the station, from all the research I've done, from all of the chiefs I've spoken to, seems like it should be the exception to the rule.
Has that happened, though? Have we gotten to a scene recently that we needed equipment?
Maybe not.
Right, I think that...
I respond out, but how about the officer or the OIC's discretion? Let's say, if you wanted to go directly, say, or whatever, or you want, it's also part of the plan.
We can do that.
I mean, for example, that place across the street here, I came direct when I was running a call, and I was one of the first ones inside of it. You know, it was like a second, inside that building, you know, across the street. So, I mean, it is what it is. I think a lot of that has to do with common sense.
Correct, needs really good verbiage.
I mean, will you go over, obviously, you'll go over everything with the membership, right?
If you write the rule wrong, these guys are gonna eat it up. And they're gonna take it for, it's in stone, and they're gonna sit at the station and wait for a truck to come back because we're too strict on it. You have to make it so that it be a guideline. It's not a rule, it's a guideline.
I agree with that. I mean, again, in EMS calls, the fire calls, yes, if you don't have your turnout gear, there's no reason to go to that scene.
Exactly.
So, that's common sense, though.
But if you're driving by an EMT call and you're needed to help do CPR, that's not necessarily required for you to go back to the station. You could go directly to the scene.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so damned if you do, damned if... So, it is a gray area, it comes out the common sense, but I will agree on the fire part. Yes, I mean, I don't think, again, it's common sense, you don't show up to a fire call without your turnout gear. If it's a structured fire, and you do that, you're a special kind of stupid. I mean, you really are. So, I mean, I'm okay, because it is a gray area, and it does specifically say that. And I think if you talk this over with your membership and get them to understand where we're at with that, then you should be okay.
Personally, someone on the street had an officer, an officer, an officer, you're gonna start to show and check them off. That way, there's a cap...
Right.
So, then that would cover all this.
Which I love.
All right.
I mean, well, so, what if we were that, he just said off-duty, are you guys okay with the officer in charge discretion?
Do we wanna separate the fire calls and the EMT calls?
Well, you really...
Brian, you're shaking your head no. Why?
Confusing?
Why, I would say no, is because, okay, say an auto accident. Is that a fire call? Or is that an EMS call?
That could, yeah.
That's fair.
Again... Let's just, can't, I mean, again, we could do that to call in, but then I think that's gonna cause confusion, too. It's just, again, if you, if there's an active fire, you know you don't have your turnout gear, you're gonna go to the station. I don't see anybody showing up going, "All right, I hear him." I mean, that would just be...
Then obviously, once we get this all intact, we can go back and fix whatever needs some...
But maybe make it say, you know, because of desire of having safety gear and appropriate vehicles, the first, you know, duty is to stop at the station. Officer on call may determine that to be unnecessary for certain calls, something...
But then, I don't know, does that take up time, then?
Not really. I mean, it is what it is. Might have been, as long as we get our trucks going right away, we should...
It just also takes up a lot of call if we have people showing up and we don't have the appropriate trucks and equipment. That's what I wanted to try to break from.
But I don't, I mean, that's, I guess, my, is this a problem that we have?
As of right now.
I mean, was it ever a problem that you guys can remember where we didn't have the equipment at the scene?
Yes, I mean, it has been.
Right.
I mean, it just happens, though. There's times where we get to a crash, you can't get to the station.
I mean, this is just the time for us to really think about this, so I wanted to bring that up today.
All right.
So, would we all agree to that, that we maybe put about the importance of having equipment, but that may be determined unnecessary by the OICs?
We'll put PPE.
PPE. Okay.
Again, so, let's say I'm responding to a fire, and you're already on scene. Are you gonna hear, and so I can get the permission to not go to the station?
Well, you still have to go to fire to get your turnout gear, because only the officers are allowed to take your gear off.
Okay.
Oh, well, that's a good point.
All right, so then, yeah, well, then...
Because I just don't imagine...
They have to go to the station then. So, yeah, so they have to go to the station, there's just no...
Fire calls, yes.
But on EMS, like I said, tick-tock, time's an essence on a lot of those calls.
And it wouldn't make no sense for, say, Brian, for example, if we have a call down the cemetery, and you to come up here when you could go directly there.
We've always done it that way in the past. I mean, I think when you lived off of fourteen, we had calls on Hartzell, and you just over to Hartzell to get somebody on the scene quicker. And then, we know the ambulance is coming, because whoever's on scene at the...
So, I think we're all in agreement of the basic idea of what we're trying to put into the, to the policy, just we'll have to get the verbiage, and if it's in the spirit of what we're talking about, I wouldn't have any issues with that.
I just think, I just all comes back again to common sense, I agree.
Right, there was, we would deal with that on kids' week spaces.
Right. All right. Where are we at? Nine?
And these were just changes of different verbiage of what we're calling the trucks now.
Right. Which, okay. Makes it easy?
Change is hard, but...
Where are we at, then? We're past ten?
I'm on policy four.
Okay.
And I didn't see any changes here. Did you initiate any changes here?
Page twelve?
I just added a little note there.
Yeah, no, that's very...
And that is on art, correct?
It should be.
Okay, I just, I guess I, I'm getting...
All it is saying is if they're standing by the station, you know, obviously, they gotta work, that's different.
Yeah, that's...
Don't bail on this when you got all this hoes in.
For you, the last one.
Gotcha. Okay.
I agree.
Everything else is the same?
You added in policy seven, the same idea, all trucks must be started and fuel-checked during your shift if the vehicle's already washed it.
Yeah, and added, there's special assignments by the chief.
Oh, you like this?
I didn't see that.
That makes it easier for dispatch just to look at the sheet. We don't have to ask for anything.
That way, if we, if we act like today...
Right, so...
Yep.
So, if you say a box letter one, these are the people who are requesting the show? What happened to the show? Okay.
The new policy, starting with policy eight, can we talk about that one just a little bit?
Eight, eight, eight.
So, um...
Page two.
On the new one, it's eighteen.
Yes.
That's right, but the page number looks different. Oh, that's it.
Yeah.
You're at eighteen.
Eighteen, page eighteen, policy eight.
When you and I met previously, Scott, we had talked a little bit about injuries while on duty, and about being cleared through UH to come back if they've been injured on duty. And I saw, and we had a lot of discussion about that, and I think there was a lot of gray area in that as well. But on the new policy, it's been completely admitted, so maybe we can discuss that a little bit? That was eight point six?
That was even one that I wrote.
Okay.
Eight point six.
So, it's not on the new one? Yeah, any member with a workman's compensation, qualified illness or injury should be seen and qualified for return to duty by UH Occupational Health prior to return. On the new one, it looked like it was omitted.
Oh, really?
It was.
Well, really, that would be whoever Workers' Comp says, what would be UH, right?
So, we're, our Workers' Comp is through UH, I believe, because that's who we're contracted with? To do due... Okay.
I mean, if I get hurt, let's say I got hurt today, and let's say we go to the hospital, I mean, I don't know if they'll make me go through UH or go through somewhere else, or I think it should be under discretion.
We have, well, we have it set up through UH, that's why, because we have an account with them. That was, that was why we chose them. If we wanna discuss that, we can, but it would need to be through their occupational health. Not just any physician through occupational health so they'd be cleared for duty. You remember that discussion?
I remember discussion, but this is what was given, so I didn't, that's why I don't have any more on it. What was the subtitle even?
Accident policy eight point six. And the entire... Yeah, I mean, the entire policy said, "Any member with a workman's compensation, qualified illness or injury should be seen and qualified for return to duty by UH Occupational Health prior to return." So, if they're sick, they have a heart attack, maybe we talked about that, might not even be an injury. Any kind of illness or anything that required medical attention while they were on duty to have them cleared through occupational health to be returned to duty.
Who decides if it is?
If it was something that required medical attention.
If it falls under Workers' Comp, I guess, that's my... Who makes that determination that this is a Workers' Comp? They're on duty and...
I think as soon as, let's say someone was working, I'll use myself, if I was working today, let's say something happened, I should immediately be going, notifying him and...
So, whoever was running the scene would see?
Yeah.
Or if that particular person thought it would be something they'd like to turn into Workman's Comp, then they would have to be cleared. So, it would be...
I can say once that stuff would take like twenty-four hours at minimum.
I'm just trying to make...
I think I made a warm-up, and it should be in the file at the station, accident form. But even, for example, let's say I was, we were running a call, and I said I hurt my back, fill it out, whether you're a doctor or not, that's, there's just some documentation there.
Matter of documentation, okay?
Yeah, everything is documented.
Yeah, okay.
So, would we be comfortable with adding eight point six back to...
I would, I think it protects the department and township.
I do, too. And protects the person. If somebody really was hurt, we wanna make sure that they get, you know, cleared before they come back.
So, whatever comp you have is missing that.
It is.
Mine, too. Okay. So, eight point six. So, again, so when we're gonna do this, the only thing I'm asking for is that we don't do this on the final.
Oh, no.
You know, so when we go to approve it, it's no chicken scratch off to the sides or whatever. Okay. Ten.
Is that, oh, you have on that one then?
Yes.
Do you know what we need to add?
Eight point six?
Yeah, I don't have it on this sheet.
I think it's on the original one that we had from before.
Okay. Are we going with mine?
I have no questions about nine, except that I didn't know what this was, that what Mark was just talking about. Okay.
I can't read that.
I can't either.
It says something equipment.
Services?
Servicing equipment.
Servicing of the equipment. Volunteer members' pay shall be based on when the fire department equipment is serviced. Wait a minute, yeah.
Back in service.
So, when you bring something back, for instance, bring a truck, I guess it needs to be refueled or whatever, it needs to be done. I think that's what you guys were going for there?
Back in service.
I wasn't writing it.
It's not mine.
Okay.
So, basically, when you go back, I guess maybe if you use med, meds, that, everything restocked and everything. Yeah.
Yes. Everything's ready to go for the next call.
All right.
So, do we need to add that down?
No, I don't think, I don't... Fire department equipment is back and ready for service. No, I don't know. Basically, I think it says, this, when the equipment gets back, doesn't mean it's ready, so you wanna service it to make sure it's ready.
Right.
Right?
Exactly what this says, except there's just extra verbiage, so I wasn't sure what that was. I think we can just admit it, extra verbiage.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we're going on to ten?
Yes.
And there was a big change in ten, and I'm not sure we're fully understanding what we're doing here, because we had a lot of changes in ten point... Um, there was some changes in ten point three, you can tell me a little bit about what we're doing there.
I didn't scratch on any of that, because I don't know. I might have to say that you have...
Okay.
Class cost. So, it's, depending on what you're spending for your cost, is where you're gonna commit to.
Mentors.
The state should require to pay fifty percent for all month.
And this one starts off, if a member requests a class going after UH, they've been allowing it to offer members applying for any funding as to any that is. Grant, and then a member. And then here it says, members shall be required to gain certification. That's where they have the change.
Where's that at?
So on the old one, it was admitted on the new one, and that's the difference. It took me just a minute to get, um, or forgive me. Um, on the old one, we had a section that said, members shall be required to gain certification for any classes that are compensated through the township within one year completion of said courses. Firefighter one and two, E M R, E M T, E M T A, E M T P. If certification is not completed within one year, at the end of the course, a member can be terminated, which is pretty severe, but but that was on the old policy, and we didn't add it to the new one, so, um, I'm open to discussing that and hearing what what we're doing there.
So what you're saying is, is when they go to class, then they have to take their state test. They have a year to do that.
Take it and pass it.
Take it and pass it.
Because we had a lot of discussion about that in our meeting, if you recall, Scott, you had to do that fairly and make sure that people were applying the education that we gave them.
So if if, you know, again, I know some people, they can study and they know it, but when they test, they they do terrible, so it might take them a couple times, so depending on those, how often they they offer those tests.
Well, they they, the state has operated over, they have seven days of failure on the day.
Okay.
Two, three, two, so I don't have any of that in this paperwork.
Okay.
However, I think, uh, yours would be.
Generous?
Well, I don't think generous, I think it's, uh, it's not going to work out for something with a big class, there's still people that take big classes.
But it was.
After the completion of the course. Not not to complete the course and get a certification. Which is why I thought it was generous.
Yeah, that is generous.
It was pretty generous.
I would aim to go for a quarter. I mean, three months after you pass, you want to, you want to take it.
They want to take it ASAP.
Because of the knowledge you you will forget.
But like you said, sometimes, or even sometimes people have issues taking tests, they need extra help, they need extra time. So it didn't stop them from getting the benefit of that. I don't know if termination is appropriate.
No.
A lot of times too, some people will come out, get their course over again, so that's, you know, and that puts you guys in a lot of trouble, you pay for it, or you make them pay for it, or that's something that's.
Well, something worth discussing, especially if we're utilizing the safer grant, how we're utilizing it.
I would say, you know, a three month, unless, uh, cleared otherwise. I mean, you know, a three, you have three months for the time you complete your course and take your your state test. Unless there's some other circumstances that.
I've had issues when I was teaching, uh, just to get this up to class and that important, so.
Yeah.
So there's there's.
Which is a perfect reason for an extension. But also, um, you know, I don't know how that works, if you're, does it take a certain amount of time to get into a test? Does it take some time and extension to even get booked and take your test?
When I was teaching, our stuff was, the class start here, this was our end day, this was our live fire. And after all, uh, skills testing, we used three test options. Test number one, if you fail test one, this is they can come back and test two, fail test three, come back and this thing.
I know during COVID, that was a big issue with them delaying testing and things. That's what I'm assuming and nodding.
Which sounds like there's another lockdown.
But I would say, I would say three months and and.
Yeah, let's say four, this thing.
And instead of termination, maybe we make that member no longer eligible to use reimbursement or.
Again, or like, or there there's circumstances where they could like get deployed or something to that nature where it has to be on a case to case basis.
You reveal the employment of Senate.
All right, well.
Or, you know, I like the idea of not making them, letting them take more of our funding if they're not applying what we're using. So I don't know how we want to word that, or if we want to include that into this, but I think that it's worth addressing.
Well, then it goes back to to what happens if you decide the second, to the second, the second option.
Are we paying for it or are we not?
Like I said, it's something.
I would say no.
You feel bad for these people, but it's.
But we also have to weigh the benefit of the individual to the benefit of the community and the department as a whole.
It's like, I can know material, but he can throw a test in front of me and I can't. So, I mean, but again, three months?
So when we, um, when we came up to that conclusion of one year, why did we come up to that conclusion? I think a lot of the things that we discussed have that. Do we want to maybe try to have a medium and say six months? That way it gives people opportunity if there are review classes, or I I don't know. I'm asking.
I think maybe on the state side, they can have, I think, if you, I'll figure that out.
So you're thinking on the state side, they have it here.
I think, I think I don't.
Maybe that's why it's in there.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to come up with a timeframe today that we can move forward, or do we need to look into this more?
Can we leave it at, you know, for now, change?
Take termination out until we get, we can make a change later.
Yes, so we'll leave it as a year.
Will you scribble on that? Because I don't have that.
I will. So we'll take, we'll leave the year in, members are terminated, and we'll put member employment reviewed.
Yeah.
With fire chief is fine. Um, yes, and I mean, I don't think we should be giving people repeatedly pay for their classes and things if they're not getting certifications we're paying for. I don't know if that needs to be put in there. I'm hopefully.
That's that's going to be up to that, and I don't think that's going to be a fire policy, that'll be a safer grant policy, I think. I mean, as far as.
For now, it is.
Right. You know, I mean, that that'll end up becoming, if somebody wants to go and take another class, but they didn't complete, that's that's just going to come up to asking permissions from the fire chief, that it'll go to us at the at the table, and then depending on, you know, the.
And then we we have an addition of policy eleven, employee attendance policy, which we need one.
So every six months, they reset? Okay.
I had, I don't know how to do this thing. I've heard of how some of the word, some of the sound, some sound. So. I've heard some places, you start out in this, and then it's just, you know, there's no person that.
Well, what you can also do too is, the more members that we get in and more members that we train, these with not showing up, don't get written into the schedule. It'd have been a pocketbook that way. You know what I mean? So the more people we can get trained in these, in working the station.
Well, and the more people we have trained to work, also, we don't have people calling up to get coverage. So that kind of solves that issue there, if people are wanting shifts. But I do think there is a need for some type of accountability, because then, right, you know, if we're having someone who's habitually not showing up, not being where they're supposed to be, then we have, you know, need to cause for corrective action so we can correct behavior. If it's not a policy, then you can't correct the behavior in that official way.
Couldn't the, then the individual chief, if they're saying, take them in the office, explain to them what's going on and do write-ups on them? But after so many write-ups, it's, again. Then you then you can make a determination where you don't have to worry about what the point system, and it's pretty much just you retire, eat, bring them in, say, why, why, why were you, why did you call? Okay, if it's, you know, or did they call off, uh, give you twenty-four hour notice and forty-eight hour notice that, hey, I'm not going to be able to work this shift? If they don't give you that, then you come in and you write, you write-ups. I mean, I've always done three write-ups, two, two strikes and you're out, basically, so that that could be the discretion of the the officers.
And we we have a system for tracking all of this.
We're working on it.
It's much easier with the time clock. Because it's all going to be right there.
Now, again, in absence, if they got somebody to cover their shift and the shift was not left open, then it's no foul.
Excuse, right.
Right.
If you get coverage, then that's.
If you call off and there's no coverage and you didn't do anything to find somebody to cover your shift, okay.
But if you don't have a call off policy, you're going to get points, that's motivation to get somebody to cover your shift so you're not reprimanded.
Okay.
And then.
Right.
Yeah.
So are we good with that page then?
Yeah. Eleven, four. Um, this is pretty much the same thing, right? Call officer reported to scheduler, scheduler will send out an active page to all members advising of open shift. If not filled, the scheduler will notify the chief. Chief will notify the trustees of the open shift and the reason the open shift, and the open shift will will follow the above procedure. So this is where you call off and you.
Is this supposed to say trustee or trustees, like all three of you?
Well, one, one. Has to be one.
Goes back to maybe we need to have the trustee in charge of the fire department.
Well, I don't, I, again, it's, I would say that if you if you mass text, just like we get mass texts all the time, we all see them. So, and again, if if I'm, if I'm in the Bahamas, I'm not going to see the text, but two of the other ones will.
Many other townships have a trustee that's in charge of each department. We don't. That's something we typically address in January at our planning meetings, so maybe that's something we'll address in January. Correct. I'd like to see that happen, but we'll discuss that when we do our organizational meeting. And then policy twelve, the fire scheduling.
I don't have any, I just read that.
The one thing we always have to be careful of too is that, while we love it when people do a lot of hours, that we're not going into territory where we're having to pay benefits and that. So hopefully, we're tracking that very well too.
As long as they're not scheduled, they can pick up. When you schedule, that's when it's. They have, could fall into that area, but they have just raised it.
And I did speak with, uh, the prosecuting attorney about that too. We could potentially draft a waiver. So if someone did want to pick up those hours, they would have to sign a waiver saying they were doing so, knowing that they would not be eligible for X, Y, Z benefits. So that's something we could do in the future if if the need arose.
Well, I talked to Brett, he's, he told me that as long as we don't schedule, but they can pick up all they want.
Correct.
Regularly scheduled hours, so over a period of time, if you don't exceed that.
Right, so you write the schedule, if they're not on the schedule, they take that shift, that does not go towards their, what is it, eighteen hundred hours now or twenty?
Because they're volunteering.
Because they're covering an open shift for.
Right.
The sickness or a vacation.
And I like leaving it that way instead of doing. Because again, we have this, we have this, a schedule. So they can add their hours up off that schedule. Anyone in question, if they have this many hours, it's like, no, this is what I would schedule this month. These are the hours I picked up that was not scheduled. Yeah.
I just wanted to bring it up with all the new people and the new new things we're doing to make sure that we're we're aware of that. And then I have a policy thirteen, bloodborne pathogens.
I don't have anything more on it. The other thing I had was just filling out that exposure form too.
Okay.
Here it says, uh, local hands.
I mean, this looks like a very reasonable.
I haven't read this up.
Uh-huh. Do we want to include it? Do we not? Do you want to reuse that?
No, we have to. We have to have it.
Okay.
We have to have procedure for that. Said we had to have.
Still understand your sense of orders.
We couldn't use, they told us we could not use our standing orders, like more constituents, we had X, R, S. When they get down after Timmy's deal.
Yeah.
When this came out, because they said we had to have our own policy. We couldn't, we.
I had no questions or concerns about, I mean, it was wording specific that.
Even if our policy is exactly the same as that, we still have to have our own policy.
So basically, just enacted UH's.
Policy, correct.
No, this one actually came out of, uh, the Ohio Board of, uh, you know, per, uh, Ohio Division of the NS.
Oh, okay.
And is everybody okay with this one? That's an actual.
As long as UH is okay with it, I'm sure it's fine.
Here's why we looked at that over the.
Oh, okay.
We looked at UH, or the DOT one, is the one we initially was going to use.
Well, the DOT is a little bit more involved than we probably need.
And we could actually, I could actually go into truck stops and buy one.
Yeah.
DOT, physical.
Yeah, right.
That's, we're trying to get so it's through UH and not have to go through.
Correct.
Go buy it.
Through occupational health, right.
Right.
Um, while we have five more minutes, I do have another concern, um, about, you know, now we're background checking, doing physicals, which I think is great. Do we have a timeframe of when new employees are doing that and?
I personally think they should be getting interviewed by you guys and the chief, or however you guys handle that, and they don't run any calls until that's all completed.
I agree, but unfortunately, we haven't started off quite that way, so we need to backtrack.
Because they, they're not in effect yet.
I think what happens is.
But moving forward, we have people who are already working. So we we need to backtrack a little bit.
So why don't we do this? So they go to the chief, and then you recommend at the meetings that they go to us, and we we agree and they go, and they get their stuff done.
Once it's all done, this is approved, then then they, we, everybody will go before they start working.
So I think we should maybe put that in here as well. However, um, we have people who are already working, but we need to get caught up.
Well, they're not, they're not counting towards it. There was never a policy about getting that done prior.
Okay.
Right.
They didn't have to, which.
We should.
Until.
But we were still using, we would be backtracking, which we can do, we can do that retro actively. But would it be reasonable to give them thirty days to go and get caught up? Because we want to be on the up and up, we want to make sure we're doing the right thing. And it's unreasonable to tell them, you can't work anymore, because they're already working.
They don't, like I said, they don't count towards that, so.
Right, because they weren't part of the.
They weren't part of it.
They were slid in under it. Again, and we could also.
Any hired after June, when this went into place, would be eligible to use that money for that purpose. It's not that we still can't send them, we can.
We're going to send. But we have to have something in place to send them. Like right now, where do we send them?
To UH.
But there was nothing in policy that says that we, they have to go. Contolies are accepted.
Right, once we accept these, then we can backtrack and go.
Let me ask you this. So when is the next meeting?
The eleventh.
In about three minutes.
Well, no, the, no, the meeting in three minutes is only for one specific reason, it's not a regular meeting.
Uh, we're having a regular meeting.
No, I mean.
We voted in June to do regular meetings through the end of August.
This is the second one then?
Yes, it is.
Oh. There you go.
My question, if I can have these done by the next meeting, or it's not.
The eleventh, you can have it done by the eleventh.
I will, we'll have it done.
Okay.
Try to get them to us a day or two ahead of time so we can go over them, look at them.
Hopefully, we can, we can work on it tonight.
Maybe, if we can have them virtually too, that'd be so nice, so we can just email them.
Access to the, the, the change room, so.
I do.
Okay. That way we have.
We'll sit down together and make the changes that you have in yours.
It's going to save a lot of printing and paper, be able to send them virtually to the new members too, but I guess I'm still, I want to clarify. We're still sending everyone who's been hired to go do this, correct?
We will, yes.
We will. Once we get it done, are we going to do a timeframe? They have thirty days to do that, to be in compliance of the policy. I'm asking. I think we should have some kind of a plan in place.
Either that, or here's an application, and here's a physical form. Go up to UH and have them fill it out. But my question though too is, what happens when the safer grant is is done? As the township, are you guys still going to implement, gets very costly?
Yeah, that's true.
There was always a physical requirement before.
It would just be, it would be a, uh, a question of where does the money come from? If we have more funding, if we're paying for it out of our budget, that we would have to readdress that at that time.
Okay. I would just say, um, get them done, and then before the eleventh, uh, if we could have a week before the eleventh or whatever, you can give them an answer or something, just put them on our desk, and everybody can grab theirs, read it, and then we'll 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 do it on the eleventh and.
What about the monies that's spent on these classes where the people up and leave after they get their cert?
So when it comes to the safer grant, we actually can't require any kind of, um, longevity from them because it's a federal grant, and it's for the betterment of the person, not the department. When it's coming from our our Deerfield money, we can. When it comes to the safer grant, we cannot.
But have you accepted the grant, gotten anything from the grant?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The money that was paid for these classes, are you talking about? Has it come out of the general?
No.
Safer grant.
Well, not yet.
Well, it hasn't been dispersed yet, but it was agreed. Well, it hasn't been dispersed yet, but it was agreed upon to come out of.
But it hasn't been dispersed, like how can you use it?
I, I understand what you're saying, it's like, we're talking about, which, Westover, we paid for her classes, for dive classes, and boom, she's gone. I, we, I think we're planning on using the Safer Grant for that.
Because it's higher education.
If we do not.
Safer Grant. Because the grant literally specifically tells us, we cannot tell somebody they have to stay here, we can't leverage people that way.
But that is in our normal.
But you've not accepted the policies and such.
But it's in our normal policies.
Because if not our policy, it's FEMA's policy.
But I'm saying, if you've not accepted those policies, how can you use that money already?
We did accept the FEMA grant. We just haven't done.
Right.
Paying attention. If you've not accepted the policies and procedures for the FEMA grant, how can you use the money already?
We've accepted the FEMA grant as it is, we have to implement policies for our department so that we can utilize the FEMA grant that we've already accepted.
Right, but we don't need the policies to be able to get money.
It's not our discretion to change that, that's a FEMA policy, not ours.
So the law is so developed, like if it's done right, right now.
So we can start dispersing.
Doing it the accurate way, and letting the fire department do it, and then go over with you guys, you're rushing everything, and it's not making any sense, that's why we've had to counter them multiple times.
But I guess my point is, I do not, I don't think the FEMA grant requires us to have policies in place to take the money. I don't think so.
The way I understood it, it goes.
And I've talked to other people, and they're saying, it's, you, you, everybody says, some people say yes, some people say no.
That's something we can find out.
But I don't, and the last chief that I talked to said, no, you do not have to have your policies in place to accept the money and disperse the money.
And these are policies we should have in place anyway.
But again, we don't have to though, to, to use that, so we could use that tomorrow if we wanted to.
Most of those policies we've had for 20 years that have been there.
Right, but I guess my, my other question is, in, in here, we do have a point system, or where you, if, if they're in here, they have to give us a year, it's in here.
You mean Miles wrote those when he was the chief?
But we can't discern how the FEMA money is spent, that is up to FEMA.
Do you, you understand what I'm saying? It's in here that we have in this policy.
You guys can say yes or no if that money gets spent or not.
Correct.
So you can.
We voted to spend that money already, so to revoke it would be to go against what we said we would already do.
Nobody said to revoke it.
Just hope.
No, I'm looking at, in here, it says, if you go to EMT school, or you spend this much money of that FEMA grant, you have to give us a year. It's in here, as a policy.
No, it says after the FEMA grant expires. It's, it's differentiated.
Let me look here.
Yeah, show me, show me what you mean.
That's what I'm looking for. Did I find it? Let's get ready for a regular meeting.
Yes.
So, damn it, where is that at?
Page 23.
Uh, here we go.
So it says, any member taking classes that did not meet the requirements of schooling or classes that are allocated by the Safer Grant, and after submitting a schooling assistance application, will be required to remain in good standing according to the Deerfield Fire Department, that's after the Safer Grant.
For duration of one year, at the end of.
It's differentiated after the Safer Grant.
Any members taking classes that do not meet the requirements of schooling or classes that are allocated by the Safer Grant. And after submitting school assistance application, will be required to remain in good standing according to the Deerfield Fire Department policies for duration of one year, from the end of the class, per $1,000 on their schooling. So I wouldn't say that's at the end of the Safer Grant. Safer Grants are four years, correct?
Correct.
So, if you do your schooling, and we send you, then they're still, they're having that.
Can you guys call for clarification on that?
Because I, that's in there.
So the question was about our policies and how it affects Safer Grant versus after Safer Grant being the qualifications to be committed to the department. 10.3 is the question, and, you know, it's worded that after the Safer Grant is no longer in effect, this would be the, the regular policy of commitment to use money for the department would go into effect. They're questioning the wording of this and how that works. So.
So essentially, why are we paying for people's schooling that aren't going to give you the time back?
We cannot, I'm trying to explain that, but she doesn't seem to understand that when the FEMA grant is delegating the money, we cannot give, make them have a commitment. That's the FEMA, that's FEMA, that's not us.
But you paid for a class even before the FEMA grant?
No, we didn't, we had the FEMA grant in June.
But she was already in the class.
And we agreed to pay for it.
Before.
After we accepted the grant in June.